Valley Talk on News Talk 1580 KGAL.
And a very Merry Christmas on this Christmas Eve. I'm Dave Adams. We are live today from our studios, but the program we're going to be sharing with you is a repeat program from December 18th. Seems it's hard to book guests on Christmas Eve. Can't understand why, but everybody have a Merry Merry Christmas. We're going to replay a program from December 18th when we had Hasso Herring in the studio. We talked about the Eddyville project on Highway 20 to what the Oregon Transportation Commission is going to do to fix that project with the challenges they've run into. We also on that program talked to State Representative Andy Olson about the Nike special session, the outcome, what he thinks of that as well. Today, we are still giving away the Quiznos Taste on Us $10 gift certificate. $10 gift certificate for Quiznos and just send me an email, dave@kgal.com or call the station at 926 KGAL or 451 KGAL and we'll put your name into the drawing. Now, after the interview, you're going to be hearing about the Eddyville Highway 20 project at Eddyville. We talked to Rick Little of Oregon Transportation, Oregon Department of Transportation. We also talked to him this morning to get an update because OTC met on December 19th to talk about that. They made kind of a, they gave a direction for the future. Have not yet made a firm, formal, firm decision on what to do, but we did a follow-up on that piece and you'll hear that after the replay of the December 18th program. Welcome to Valley Talk. I'm Dave Adams. Again Merry Christmas and now the show from December 18th. Hasso Herring in the studio. We have on the phone Rick Little from the Oregon Department of Transportation and myself. Thanks for being with us today on this Christmas Eve.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Good morning, Hasso and Dave.
And the question is, you know, that tomorrow, on Wednesday, the Oregon Transportation Commission is going to meet and among other things will discuss a request to allocate some more money to that project. As I understand it, the cost so far has run around $200 million, $201 million to be exact. And the plan is to allocate, to finish it in such a way that the estimate of the additional cost would be about $197 million. So bringing the entire cost of this project to nearly $400 million. Now, the, the project shortens about 10 miles of Highway 20 to about five and a half miles and, and straightens out some kinks in the road that exist now. The, those hairpin turns are a little difficult to negotiate for, especially for interstate trucks and they have led, and they have been the scene of some accidents, some serious bad accidents, fatal accidents. So it makes some, I mean, there's some rationale for having gone through that whole thing, but you, you have to wonder at the, at this enormous cost, you know, 400, nearly $400 million, whether it was worth cutting out four and a half miles of distance between Corvallis and Newport. What's, what's the, what's the, what's the ODOT response to that sort of a question?
Well, I guess my response personally would be we can't go backwards. We can only go forwards. The coastal communities decades ago identified the improvement of US 20 as very critical to the growth of their area, for the distribution of commerce and for the safety of their traveling public. It was a priority at a statewide level for many years to get this highway project completed. And yes, it suffered some setbacks, probably more so than any other project in, in our generation of engineers. But the need that created the project decades ago still exists, Hasso.
Sure. The, the project began with a, with a, with an approach to construction that called for a design contract, that is a, a design construction, design build contract, where the contractor, the eventual winner of this contract was also the one who designed it. Did, did ODOT engineers have a hand in the design? Did they authorize the original design that did, that called for, if I recall, 10 bridges in that section? Six of them, six of them, I believe, have been completed and those four were started and caused trouble and were had, were not completed and now are being torn down. So, did, did ODOT approve, I mean, have a hand in, in pushing for this bridge design?
Well, ODOT certainly made the decision to take this particular project, design, build. And it did so long before the project started in 2005 because the staff on hand at that time was simply not of such a level to tackle a project of this complexity at that time with all the other projects that they were designing and building across the state. You have to keep in mind that at the, at the time this project really culminated in construction, there'd been a pretty significant increase in funding available for highway improvements around the state, which basically kept our staff very busy. We knew there was a need for this project. It was a priority and the decision was made to take it design, build. What design, build does is it puts the design of the project as well as the construction in the hands of the contractor. Design bid build projects, which many people are familiar with, are usually designed by ODOT and then they're put out to bid by contractors and the contractors bid to construct the project as designed by ODOT. Design, build shifts that responsibility to the contractor itself and ODOT made the determination based on all the other projects that it had on its hands at that particular time. Was it the best decision? I think hindsight will, will answer that resoundingly, no.
Well, I'm not sure, Rick. And the, the idea of the, of the design, build approach certainly, I don't think anybody faults that necessarily. I think the, the thing I'm wondering about, whether or not the idea of building bridges in those particular places was something that was suggested to the contractor or to say, or was it said to the contractor, "Look, here's what we want you to do. We want you to design a bunch of bridges instead of," for example.
We can't direct a project that's design, build. So, we just, I mean, the, the rules of design, build simply don't allow us to tell the design builder how to design the project. That responsibility is the contractor's. Now, the question of bridges came up during the environmental analysis. The attractiveness of bridges to the environmental regulators was great. They would rather see crossing, fish bearing stream crossing with a bridge than with a culvert, which, you know, creates some impacts on fish stocks. So, this particular contractor, when they submitted their original bid for the project, included the construction of the bridges, which many regulators found attractive, which ODOT found attractive. And was it the deciding factor? No, but it was a factor in the original consideration.
So, the idea that the landscape in that part of the country is mostly moving all the time did not, did not come up at the time, right?
That's not quite correct, Hasso. In the environmental analysis, the original environmental analysis, there were some landslides that were known in the area and that were identified. And at the time that we put out the request for proposals to the contractors, we specified that those contractors would have to do additional study, additional research and learn more about not only the identified landslides, but any others in the area. So, we certainly didn't go into this thinking, "Oh gosh, there aren't any landslides in this area." I mean, after all, this is the coastal range. There were some identified and that was, you know, that played a, a small role in the decision to go design, build because the risk of taking on those landslides then becomes the risk of the contractor rather than the owner of the project.
Now, we are of course at this juncture and you say, and obviously you point out that you can't go backwards. As I mentioned, the Transportation Commission is going to act on this request most likely tomorrow. Is there, are there any alternatives to the idea of going ahead with the completion of this project? For example, I had, I had read in the press somewhere that somebody may have been thinking of saying, "Well, how about we, we not spend any more money on this project, but instead do something else to straighten out the remaining curves on that section of the highway?" Is that a possibility?
So, the Highway Administrator, when he realized that there was going to be a request for an additional $176.6 million from the Oregon Transportation Commission to complete this project, didn't want to go in and just submit that as a isolated standalone request. He wanted to provide a range of options to the commission to consider that would help put the completion of this project in perspective. So, what will be occurring tomorrow before the Transportation Commission is that they will be presented with five different options to consider in moving forward with the next phase of this project. Two of the options would complete the project as it has begun. In other words, it would complete the, the realignment, the new alignment of the project. Two of the options would address the existing US 20 and adjust, on one option, we go in and widen the curves. This is just very general conversation here, not specific. But one option would widen the curves. The other of the two options addressing the US 20 would realign the curves and widen the roadway in some locations. And the fifth option would be, what would it take to bring this project to an end? All of these have risks. All of them have costs associated with them and the intent of the Highway Administrator was to give the commission this range of options as a way of offering the commission perspective of their decision.
The idea of widening some of the curves and that option, in other words, would that be less expensive?
One, one of the two options to address the US 20 would be marginally less expensive. I don't have exact numbers for you because to be honest with you, the, the final presentation to the Oregon Transportation Commission is still in draft form and they're still tweaking it. But I can tell you that one option, the, the larger of the two options addressing US 20, the current US 20, would actually carry a price tag that would be in the neighborhood of 15 to 16 million dollars more than completing the new alignment. The lesser of the two alternatives for the existing US 20 would come in close to $90 million less than completing the new alignment. So, one is more expensive, one is less expensive.
And I guess I think it is worth remembering that much of the work on the new alignment really has been done, as I understand.
That's a very good point, Hasso. I'm glad you raised that because really what we're talking about, we're talking about a five and a half mile new alignment and more than half of that has already been completed and paved. So, we're really talking about roughly about a two and a half mile segment of roadway that happens to be the area, include the areas where the four bridges were to be located. When, when the ground movement was detected in 2010, that indicated that those bridge columns were moving. And then ultimately the decision was made to replace those bridges with culverts. This is all in a, in an area that's about less than, well, it's about two and a half miles long.
And so, it is interesting also to note what the alternative, what the recommended option for completing the project there is. Instead of bridges, the idea is to fill the valleys essentially with, as you pointed out to me earlier, three and a half million cubic yards of material that is going to be moved, I guess, from elsewhere, probably from the rest of the hills. Describe how that is going to be done.
Well, you, you hit on it there, from the rest of the hills. This, this whole project has been one of cuts and fills. Keep in mind, we're going through the coastal range. It's a mountain range. And in order to keep the alignment at a certain level, we would cut through some of the mountains or hills and we would take that material and fill the valleys or the low spots as we went along. And that's the way a lot of this project has already been built. We've already moved more than 4 million cubic yards of material. As we like to say, that's enough to fill a research stadium seven times. We anticipate having to move another three and a half million cubic yards of material as part of the completion of the project. Included in that is additional landslide mitigation buttresses that need to be constructed. So, when it was decided to replace the bridges with the culverts, we set about to demolish those bridge components that had already been completed. There were four bridges that we're talking about here and only one had actually been completed. The others were in various stages of completion. Since that time, so since May, when ODOT took the project back over, it's no longer a design, build project like we talked about earlier. This is an ODOT-run project. And since May, when we took it over, we've, we've demolished and removed the bridge and the bridge components that had already been constructed.
The, these culverts that you mentioned, of course, they, they would be carrying the streams that run through those valleys. And the idea of original, originally was that the bridges would leave those streams more untouched, I guess. Was that right?
Correct.
And so now, the, the streams will run through culverts instead. The culverts though are not going to be built right away. Explain that.
Well, they're, they're, as I understand it, they're, and keep in mind, I'm not an engineer. So, in fact, they get nervous whenever I talk because, because I'm not an engineer.
Good thing too, because if an engineer talked, we wouldn't be able to understand the thing.
Well, I'm not going to go there either, Hasso. So, yeah, the culverts would definitely have an impact to the fish runs if the fish runs made it up that, that far. And in order to mitigate that impact, we've agreed to a mitigation plan that would include some enhancements made to the Yaquena River estuary.
You know, it's amazing how far upstreams fish actually run. It is, I mean, completely beside the point, but sometimes, I mean, way up someplace where you wouldn't possibly think a fish could ever go. You'll find them if you really look for them. There's another question about this project that I hope you can address and that has to do with the money. The additional money that is going to be spent on this project would, would come from various sources. Would it affect other highway projects that are now on the planning stage? In other words, would it delay those projects?
Well, obviously, whenever you take a large sum of money out of a budget, it's going to have an impact on other projects. Now, I will say this, that about half of the amount of money we're talking about, and the request before the Oregon Transportation Commission is for $176.6 million. That's how much ODOT is, is going to ask for to complete this project. About half of that is coming from savings from other projects and programs. Because typically, you know, I mentioned earlier about the influx of funding for highway improvements over the past decade or so. We have consistently delivered projects under budget and at this point, we have a pretty good savings account, enough that we think that we can fund about half of that 176 million with the savings from other projects. In addition to that, in the time period that led up to this most recent reauthorization of highway funding in the nation by Congress, known as the MAP-21 funds, that's the acronym from Congress, MAP-21, we were very conservative because it was very unclear to us how much money we might get from the federal government. So, we were extremely conservative in what projects we planned for, for 2013 and 2014. As it turned out, the MAP-21 funding was in excess of anything we planned for. So, we have an excess in, or in unaccounted for MAP-21 funds. So, we think with the savings and with a conservative budgeting that we had already done, we can, we can come up with that $176.6 million.
So, you don't think, Rick, that approval of this money, if it in fact gets approved, will delay any other projects that are already in the pipeline?
There is no other project identified that is funded, that is targeted by these funds that we can point to and say with any, with any definition that it'll have a direct impact. No.
If, if the plan goes ahead as now, you know, as you just outlined, the highway will be ready for traffic, for cars and trucks to go to the coast from the, from the Willamette Valley. What year?
Well, when we took the project over in May, we estimated we would have the highway ready for traffic in 2015. Since that time, we've been able to gather an awful lot more information from all the instruments, more than 100 that we've installed over the past year at various locations of the project corridor. And we've gathered a tremendous amount of data from that.
These are instruments measuring the movement of the earth?
Measuring ground movement, measuring groundwater pressure. Groundwater pressure plays a fascinating role in the activity of the landslide and landslides in general. And, and part of this first phase of construction that we kicked off in May is actually draining the hillsides of groundwater by installing horizontal drains. And we've, we've installed a slew of them. I have an exact number actually, like 190,000 feet of horizontal drains since May.
Where do they drain this water to?
They, they put it back into the creeks, into the drainages that exist up there.
Okay.
So, anyway, where I was going with this was originally we thought we would put traffic on in 2015. We now think that if we can study the effects of the horizontal drains and continue to gather data from the other instrumentation, if we had another year before we put traffic on it before we made those decisions, we could refine our ultimate design, the final design, and very likely could save millions of dollars. And we think just by construction staging alone, when we get back to those culverts, we can save more than $20 million. So, we're, right now, we're thinking we would prefer to put traffic on in 2016 and use that year to gather more information to save more money and refine the design. Now, in addition to that, the Highway Administrator is of the opinion that he really doesn't want a date to be driving decisions on this project. It would be great if we could put traffic on in 2016. It would be better if we could put it on sooner, but if it has to come later, as long as we build a better project, that's what the Highway Administrator wants right now.
And even if the highway gets, is, is able to be used in 2016, as I understand it, there would be some additional work that need to, would need to be done for a couple of years after that?
That's correct. There's some environmental work. And again, with respect to those culverts, you know, the earlier you put traffic on with the culverts, you might have to go in with a temporary pipe and then come back and put the culverts in. If you can delay that sort of work for a year and just put the culverts in, you can save a tremendous amount of money. But there would be additional work that might take the project until 2018 to complete.
Now, the Oregon Transportation Commission considering this issue tomorrow?
That's correct. So...
What's exactly on the agenda? What are they doing?
Well, what's on the agenda is a request to amend the STIP, that's the Funding Mechanism, the Statewide Transportation Improvement Program, to increase the funding to the project by $176.6 million. Now, as part of that request, the Highway Administrator will make this presentation where he'll lay out five different options, two of which to complete the project, two of which to abandon the project and to make modifications to the existing US 20, and one option to just see what it takes to actually bring this project to an end.
Has ODOT heard from any of its constituencies, City of Newport, City of Corvallis, AAA or anybody else about what the public would prefer?
Absolutely. You know, it's that no build option that once word got out that there was actually an option to button up the project and bring it to an end, brought out some strong reaction from those coastal communities and from legislators and elected officials as well as members of the area commissions on transportation.
And the reaction was which way?
Well, the reaction, I would say the overriding reaction, the strongest reaction has been, "Don't stop this project." That the need for it is still as great now, if not greater than before. And it is unfortunate that we've reached the point where the project has, has caused as much as it has and has presented as difficult challenges as it has, but don't turn back away from it now.
It would be kind of a testament to, to futility to see all that, that finished road that didn't go anywhere. So, I think I can understand, I can understand that reaction.
The highway to nowhere. Yeah. So, go ahead.
I will say that in, in some of the news media coverage, some interesting viewpoints have been raised to the alternative. There's at least one state senator who's raising a question of whether or not it's time to call this project to a halt. And there is, there have been comments made by at least one of the commission members that raises a question as to whether or not he might support the option to bring the project to
And this additional segment of Valley Talk on KGAL is being recorded December 24th, the morning of, and we want to talk to Rick Little once again and get an update on what the Oregon Transportation Commission did on December 19th regards the Eddyville project. Rick, good morning and Merry Christmas first of all.
Well, good morning and Merry Christmas to you.
What did OTC do on the 19th?
Well, keep in mind, they had, they were presented with five options on how to proceed with the US 20 project, two of which would have completed the project, two of which would have abandoned the project in favor of making modifications to the old US 20 or the current US 20. And the fifth option was to do what was necessary to bring the project to a conclusion. They ended up deciding to take more time to study the option that would build the new alignment on US 20, complete the project, but would do so with a longer timeline with the intention of saving money. Staff presented a detailed briefing to the commission explaining that early results of instrumentation readings that we're getting after drawing down groundwater levels in the fills and on the cut slopes of the project were encouraging and that if they had a year to study the effects of drawing down those water levels, they might not need to come forward with landslide mitigation to the extent that they would if they had to complete the project by 2015, which was another one of the options. So, in other words, the Transportation Commission decided that possibly there was merit in taking longer to complete the project, taking time to study the effects of the groundwater reduction. And they asked the staff to come back in January and give a refined cost estimate of what that option might look like, how much that option might cost. There was a cost estimate of roughly $276 million associated with that option this time around, but after being asked some specific questions by the commission members, staff agreed that it was a rough estimate and that they, they very likely could come back with a better estimate in January. So, that's the option, or that's the direction that the commission took.
Do we have a date, a deadline in January and when that new estimate is expected?
Well, they, they meet every month. I don't have that date off the top of my head, to be honest with you. It would be their monthly meeting in January.
Rick Little from the Oregon Department of Transportation. I'm Dave Adams. This is Valley Talk. Don't forget to sign up for the Quiznos Taste on Us. You can send me an email. I'm here live in the studio today on this Christmas Eve, dave@kgal.com or call the station at 926 KGAL or 451 KGAL. A repeat of our December 18th Valley Talk show. The next segment will include a visit with Andy Olson. Hasso Herring was in the studio that day as well, and we talked about the special session regards to Nike. That's when Valley Talk continues. The Mennonite Village presents Memories of Christmas.
One of the most probably outstanding memories I have is of a little girl, one year, who was, I believe, nine or 10 years old. And she had collected a lot of stuffed animals over the years. One year, she had told her parents that she wanted to bring those stuffed animals in, 80 of them, and give them out to the residents as gifts.
That is Bev Knox, a longtime employee at the Mennonite Village. Bev continues.
And that just amazed me that a young child like that would be thinking about other people. And that was really a, a special memory for me. Her name was Randy. I remember that. She was just, just a sweet little girl and just enjoyed passing the toys out to the residents. Of course, the residents loved children anyway. So, that was really, really a very special time.
Memories of Christmas brought to you by the folks at the Mennonite Village.
Lebanon shopping, it just makes sense.
Let Myra's cookies help you with your holiday gatherings. Call me for platters of cookies, lemon bars, cinnamon rolls, and apple or pumpkin pie. Hi, this is Myra. Call me now at 541-905-5152 or order online at myrasc cookies.com. That's 905-5152 for Myra's cookies. Life is short. Eat a cookie today.
Need tires? Hi, this is Dawn from Canega Tire Factory. From lawnmowers to tractors, cars and trucks, we have what you need. And Canega Tire's ASE certified mechanics can help you with your brakes, shocks, struts, alignment, oil changes, and stuff you won't believe. Even propane for your barbecue and RV. Canega Tire Factory, still at the Y in Lebanon.
Looking for a specific business or service in Lebanon? Call or come by the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. We'll put you in touch with the business you need for any situation. 1040 South Park Street across from Canega Tire in Lebanon.
Lebanon shopping, it just makes sense.
Willamette Living Magazine brings you the best of our special area in print and online. Locally owned and operated, Willamette Living is the lifestyle magazine of Oregon's Willamette Valley from Eugene to Portland. Every other month brings a new edition back with engaging local stories, beautiful photography, and offerings from our neighbors in business. Visit willametteliving.com to read the current issue online. Find out about advertising your business or subscribe now and have every issue delivered to your home or office. Willamette Living Magazine, your guide to the Willamette Living Magazine, your guide to the best of the Willamette Valley.
For over eighty years, Willamette Manor has evolved to meet the needs of each generation. Today's seniors and people with disabilities enjoy a warm, cheerful, and caring atmosphere in a full-service assisted living community. And for those who wish to stay at home, Willamette Manor now offers in-home care, including housekeeping, companion services, and assistance with activities of daily living that includes medication management, all in the comfort of your own home. Willamette Manor services include assisted living, adult foster care, specializing in Alzheimer's and dementia, respite and in-home care. Their in-home care includes services for seniors, new moms, parents, post-surgery, and disabled persons. Call now, five-four-one-two-five-eight-eight-one-seven-eight, or stop by Willamette Manor at the corner of Second and C Streets in Lebanon. Willamette Manor assisted living and in-home care, providing quality service with Christian values. Welcome home.
Willamette Manor is looking for part-time caregivers who have at least two years' experience in in-home care.
The only way to get fresher seafood than you can find at Harry and Annette's Fresh Fish is to catch it yourself. Harry and Annette's Fresh Fish in downtown Corvallis has delectable, locally canned alba core tuna, boxed and ready to ship, wrap, or eat. Party catering and party trays sure to impress. Gift certificates, of course, and don't forget your own healthy and delicious seafood dinner. Call ahead with your special orders. Put them on your shopping list for the holidays and anytime. Harry and Annette's Fresh Fish, first in Monroe, in the Water Street Market in downtown Corvallis.
Less hype, just quality news, sports, and smart talk from your friends at fifteen-eighty KGAL.
I'm Dave Adams in the KGal Valley Talk studios. I am live today, but what you're listening to is a recorded program from our broadcast December 18th. Hasso Haring in the studio is with me, and we have another guest, Andy Olson. This is Valley Talk. I'm Dave Adams. Again, Hasso Haring in the studio with us today, and once again, we are on the telephone. Andy Olson, uh, from the Albany area, state representative, is with us. Andy, thank you for, uh, taking time out of your busy schedule and being with us on Valley Talk today.
Well, thanks, Dave.
Nike had a proposal that they worked out a deal with the governor, and it looks like the legislature, um, after some discussions, of course, they say if you ever don't want to get anything done, get a huge group of people together, and that's typically what, you know, this is maybe, uh, I'll need to comment on my part, but, uh, the legislature passed fifty to five in the House, twenty-two to six in the Senate, approving a House Bill forty-two-hundred, which, uh, um, basically says that with some concerns, uh, the legislature goes on with this, uh, securing a tax deal for Nike in the promise of jobs. What do you think about, about, uh, first of all, my question is, was a special session the appropriate way to handle this?
Well, I, I think what was happening, it was, uh, the special session wasn't only about keeping Nike from leaving, because I think that that's a piece of it also, but it also, um, rang true that the new law will enable Oregon Company to remain and expand its operations. It, you know, I, I can't speak what was going on in the back rooms, uh, with that one, Dave and Hasso, but, you know, obviously, there was something there that if, uh, something wasn't done immediately with the single sales, sales tax factor issue, the potential of losing, uh, Nike existed.
Well, you know, uh, Andy, uh, this is Hasso. Uh, I was, um, I was curious about, uh, the, the motivation for the thing. It seems to me it was the most unusual thing I've, I've really ever, I can remember about calling the, the legislature into a special session that's very, very short notice, less than a week, uh, in order to make a special, to meet a special request from a, from a single, uh, private enterprise. And, I mean, that, that, that shows, uh, how influential, of course, Nike is. Nike, uh, the big apparel manufacturer or provider, seller, designer, and so on, uh, how influential that company is in Oregon. And it seems to me that if a company can get that accomplished, then it could just as easily, uh, uh, have influenced the, the legislature into keeping, uh, that its tax status the way it is later on. I mean, the, the need for a special session, uh, for that kind of a thing seemed to me not at all apparent.
Well, I, the one thing, Hasso, that seemed to be constantly ringing, repeating, uh, holding true during that full day and actually the entire week as we were preparing for last Friday, is it just seemed like the, the change or the addition to the law just offered certainty for Nike. And I, I understand clearly what you're saying with that, but that, this seemed to be one of the biggest things that the governor was really pushing for and supporting for right now, uh, that, uh, the government wouldn't pull some type of bait and switch on the tax policy, uh, that they settled on in Oregon. And, and this was more kind of a situation to just have some ready response to and, and deal with it from that angle.
Are you aware of any, um, movement in the legislature or anywhere else in the political establishment to have, that wanted to change the, the tax system that we have for multinational corporations that are based in Oregon?
Yeah, it's a great question. Uh, no, I'm not.
So, in other words, there was nothing in the wind that anybody knows of that would have prompted Nike to make that request?
Well, other, other than, um, you know, what I've already kind of expand, you know, expanded on, uh, on that whole issue, uh, ensuring that, uh, that something else wouldn't change, but again, I'm, I'm not privy to that.
Yeah. The, the system we're talking about, by the way, has to do with the taxation of corporations, uh, in the income tax, or what is called, not really, I mean, it's an income tax, but it's called the corporate excise tax.
Right.
And, uh, the way I understand it, Oregon now taxes those companies in the following way. It considers only the sales or the, the revenue that the, the company has from sales inside the state. So, when a company like Nike sells, uh, stuff in Europe, sell, and has revenue from that, sells stuff all over the country and all over the world, that revenue is not counted toward income for the Oregon income tax purpose. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, you, it's, I, I think that's right, because you've got three different tax structures here. You've got the personal, the property, and then what you're describing, the corporate or the single, single ta, sales tax factor issue.
Right.
Um, and, and we're focusing on that third leg of that stool.
Yeah, I mean, if we're not talking about Nike's property tax, we're not talking about anything else. We're not, I mean, the...
That's right.
For example, I, I think the point has been made that Oregon could, I mean, first of all, let's describe what this, what this legislation did. Can you, can you, uh, uh, describe what the legislation actually authorizes?
Well, uh, my understanding, the way, uh, I have heard what this does, it actually gives, uh, the authority to the governor to extend this toward, uh, the oversight toward the legislature of this, uh, to initiate contracts that provide, um, certainty, uh, in our corporate tax mechanism for companies promising to create, and I believe it was, uh, at least five hundred jobs and a hundred and fifty million dollar capital investment.
Mm-hmm.
That's what, basically, that's, that's the nutshell version.
Right, and the, sure, and, and the, the contract would be negotiated by the governor with the, uh, with the help, I think, of the, uh, Director of the Department of Business Development. That's really not the name of it, but...
It's Oregon Business, or Business Oregon.
That's the one.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the contract would be for five years, and, uh, and the legislature would get an annual report, uh, or maybe a biannual report, uh, on how the company is meeting its obligations to have invested at least a hundred and fifty million dollars and created at least five hundred jobs. Is that right?
That's correct.
So...
Right, over that five-year period of time.
And it's, the, the legislation, by the way, is, I mean, I read it, it's four pages long, and it's the only bill that the legislature passed in the session last Friday, the special session.
Yes.
And, um, it does not apply only to Nike, of course. Is that right?
That is correct. Yeah. If you have, uh, another business out there that's able to invest a hundred and fifty million dollars of capital, uh, and, uh, that also promises to create at least five hundred jobs in a five-year period of time, you would be eligible for this.
Was the legislature able to, uh, learn at all anything about the details of Nike's plan?
I am not familiar with that. I am, no, I, I, I cannot tell you.
In other words, we don't know, uh, just exactly what Nike has, uh, up its sleeve and what, what it wants to build and whom it wants to hire, how many people, and all that kind of stuff?
I, I, I'm not saying that that's not out there. I do not know that.
You know, I was wondering, uh, uh, I mean, I was, when I was reading that bill, I was thinking, it is, of course, uh, helpful to the Oregon economy. By the way, Nike is a huge employer in the Beaverton area, and, and it pays very well, and it's a big factor in, uh, the Oregon economy, so it's hard to, it's hard to fault the legislature for, uh, asking what the company, uh, did, uh, what the company wanted. Um, so, uh, but, uh, I was wondering about this. Nike does most of its, um, design work and, uh, sales work and administrative work in Oregon, but most of its manufacturing is done overseas. Isn't that right?
I, well, they do do, uh, uh, a certain amount. I mean, I don't know exactly what the percentage of it is, but I do, I mean, we are aware that they have, uh, major investments, uh, outside of our state.
Hmm. Do, are you aware of any, uh, any Nike garment shoe factories or garment factories in Oregon?
Garment factories?
Garments, garments.
Yeah, garment, uh, or shoes, uh, I am not aware of any.
I'm not aware of any. Are there any that you're aware of, Hasso?
No, I'm not. I, that, and my point, that I'm sort of building up two years. It would be wonderful, uh, I mean, Nike is a great company, of course, and, and they, they, they're very successful, and they do, they, they produce a lot of good stuff. But wouldn't it be wonderful if, uh, they could also, um, I mean, and, and at the moment, they're, they're headquartered and concentrated in the Beaverton area, Portland area. Wouldn't it be wonderful if they could, uh, uh, make plans to, uh, open up, um, a shoe factory someplace where, out in the, in the rest of the state, where there's a need for manufacturing jobs, for example? Suppose they, uh, they built, uh, uh, a, a shoe factory in Albany or something like that? Wouldn't that be something?
That'd be nice. Hey, we, let me interject this. We did, uh, put in a request to Nike to be involved in the show. They declined it, but we asked them four questions. Uh, why was a special session needed? Why should Nike be given an agreement to keep taxing structure in place as current? Why is this so important? Why now? How will the state benefit? Their answers were this. Nike is a global company with a long history in Oregon. We support this proposed legislation as a way to help us continue to grow in Oregon, according to Don Blair, Chief Financial Officer for Nike. Why now? With the significant growth in our employee base, we are reaching the capacity of our existing facilities. As for the tax question, this is an assurance of tax certainty. It is an extension of current tax policy. Legislation requires Nike, according to Nike, this is how they read it, to commit to creating at least five hundred jobs, we've already talked about that, invest at least one hundred fifty million capital investment over five years. We do not, we don't have specifics to share on what we'll be planning to do beyond that. Finally, their statement, we appreciate the legislative leadership, community leaders, the entire legislature's willingness to act quickly and decisively. They are, this is a very positive step forward, not only for our company, but for the state of Oregon. We are looking forward to reaching an agreement with the governor as soon as possible. And that concludes Nike's, um, emailed statement to us. The quote, the comment that I have is this, and I wish this were making a bigger wave on the national scene. It seems to me that this is essentially what companies are saying to governments, state, federal government, is that we are not, we're very concerned about making investments into the future because we don't know what the taxing structure is going to look like. Nike stepping forward and saying, guarantee to us what the taxing structure will be and will invest in the future. I, I wish this kind of message could resonate to Washington DC so they could say, folks, you gotta make a decision, and you've got to, we've got to know what this looks like or else we're not putting our money where our mouth is in creating jobs. Uh, that's, uh, essentially to what this means to me. What is your comment on that, uh, Andy?
Well, I think, Dave, you hit it on the head. I, I mean, when you just, no action is, I mean, poor for a country, it's poor for business, and, and constant arguing, uh, doesn't help either. At least you saw, uh, a proactive effort here last Friday to do something for business, uh, though there might only be just a few other businesses in the state eligible to receive that benefit. One of the things, I want to shift gears here, but stay true to what we're talking about.
Sure.
There were numerous bills that were introduced down in the Joint, uh, Revenue Committee on Friday and through the week to move forward with this package, uh, staying with the same theme of what we eventually did. It was lowering it down, scaling it down for who could have been eligible, but the real target with doing that, Dave and Hasso, was the rural communities. If we could have gotten there, just this alone, I really do think it would have been a major step besides just what, and I'm thankful, I don't want to walk away saying I'm not thankful for Nike stepping up in the legislature doing what we did Friday, but the point being is, this could have been scaled down to a degree where it would have had major impact throughout our state and really gotten things moving faster for the economy.
Why did that, why did that not happen, Andy?
It was party line vote all the way down.
In other words, who opposed it?
Uh, would have been Democratic side.
Okay. Okay. Uh, we're running real late on a break here. We need to take a break right now, and this is Valley Talk. Be right back.
The Osgood File. This is Charles Osgood on the CBS Radio Network. In Chile's high Atacama Desert, more than three miles above sea level, a series of sixty-six radio antenna towers is sprouting into place, linked with transmitters and receivers. These towers comprise the Atacama Large Millimeter Array, ALMA for short. Was it four?
The expectation that everybody has a large is to find the origin of things. It actually sees through things that are not visible to our eye, or even to telescopes, bigger telescopes, optical telescopes, and I think ALMA will really contribute. I'm sure of it.
The story after this.
Some nights I can't get to sleep. Some nights I can't stay asleep. With Unisom, I can do both.
Unisom Sleep Tabs are clinically proven to help you fall asleep thirty-three percent faster and keep you asleep longer, so you get a more restful night's sleep. Made with an ingredient not found in other leading sleep aids, Unisom Sleep Tabs are safe and non-habit forming. Just one pill takes the uncertainty out of bedtime, giving you the sleep you need.
So I wake up, ready to go.
Unisom Sleep Tabs, fall asleep faster, sleep longer.
Geico says, let's make life simpler.
What's the old saying? Uh, build a better mousetrap and the world will be the path to your door. The trouble is, a lot of mousetraps aren't any better. They're just new. At Geico, we've been saving people money on car insurance since nineteen thirty-six. That's over seventy-five years of savings. It's simple logic, really. Why not go with the company that's invented the mousetrap? Of savings, that is.
Geico, fifteen minutes could save you fifteen percent or more on car insurance.
The windswept skies over the Atacama Desert in Chile provide the ideal conditions for astronomers to measure radiation, not only far, far away, but long, long ago. David Robinus is ALMA project engineer.
In these receivers, um, we detect the radiation from space, so we basically convert it into an electrical signal in order to make it measurable for us, so we can quantify it.
The numbers involved are, as you might expect, astronomical, but the images that result will be ten times sharper than those of NASA's Hubble Space Telescope. ALMA astronomer Violetta Impelletiere, ALMA model, so to speak.
It's nice to think of it as a telescope that can see in the dark, where optical telescopes cannot see, because they're covered by dust or they're hidden. ALMA can see through it, and so this is what makes it special. It's not just more sensitive and bigger and fastest, it actually sees through things that are not visible to our eye, or even to telescopes, bigger telescopes, optical telescopes.
One night soon, it's possible, ALMA will give to Manhattan a first glimpse of the universe just after it began. The Osgood File. Transcripts, podcasts, and MP3s of these programs can be found at theosgudfile.com. I'm Charles Osgood on the CBS Radio Network.
When you look out across the Willamette Valley, you'll see plenty of banking choices. Willamette Community Bank is here to give you an option that's pretty unique, like no other, in fact. Hi, this is Sue Kalina, Relationship Manager. Willamette Community Bank provides an alternative to large, national, and regional banks by offering customized financial services and local decision-making to benefit local people, local families, and local businesses. How many banks can say that?
Willamette Community Bank, service like no other. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
I'm gonna have a great Christmas, but this year I'll have to really stretch my budget. I'm keeping it simple by shopping at the cutest little jewelry store in the area, Mid Valley Gems and Jewelry. They'll even wrap my gifts for free. Lovely estate items, distinctive designer pieces, always some great sale items, and their prices and quality are always better than the chain stores. For the collectors on your list, twenty-twelve proof sets and silver dollars. For the collectors on your list, 2012 proof sets and silver dollars. Collectible Christmas coins, too. Coin collector supplies and starter kits, stocking stuffers from under $10. Smart shoppers know where to buy fine jewelry and gifts for less now and anytime. So if you were thinking jewelry is too expensive for your gift list, think again. Let Mid Valley Gems and Jewelry make this Christmas the best ever. Mid Valley Gems and Jewelry, on Pacific, just down from Wendy's in Albany.
The Car Show, Saturday afternoons on News Talk 1580 KGAL.
And what you've been listening to this morning on Valley Talk, a repeat of a show we had December 18th with Rick Little, ODOT, Hasso Haring in the studio as well, and you just heard a segment with Andy Olson, a state rep, a state representative from the Albany area, talking about the special session involving the request from Nike. Merry Christmas. Thank you for being with us on Valley Talk. Looking forward to being with you in the new year and after Christmas. Merry Christmas from all of us at Kgal Radio.
Some workplaces, they stand around the water cooler and talk, but then there's workplaces where they talk about the water cooler. I was thinking, how long it's been since we had the water cooler installed?
Seven years.
That's 84 trips by the poor delivery guy. Then, of course, we'd have to restack him, but not with a pure water dispenser from purewater-coffee.com, the macro solutions, folks, in Syo. Purewater-coffee.com, the macro solutions, folks, in Syo.
The Menonite Village presents Memories of Christmas.
I can remember about every year I played the part of Santa. So I get my big red costume on and come out, talk with the residents with my ho, ho, ho voice, and pass out presents, and we feed them little refreshments and things like that.
That is Bev Knox, a longtime employee at the Menonite Village. Bev continues.
We had this one resident, he was just a little tiny guy. He loved candy canes, I guess, and I hadn't realized that until we were at the party. We had given him a candy cane. He could hardly hold it with his hand, but he could stick it in his mouth and hold it in his mouth, you know, and he had moved it back and forth enough that he had all this red candy all the way around his mouth and down his chin and everything. Just seeing him sitting there enjoying that candy cane so much, it's small things like that that really make it fun for the residents.
Memories of Christmas brought to you by the folks at the Menonite Village.
Bah bah black sheep. Have you any wool? No, sir, no, sir. Some nincompoop with pantyhose pulled over his face stole all my wool sweaters and gaming system. Luckily, the GEICO Insurance Agency recently helped me with renters insurance. Everything stolen was replaced, and the little boy who lives down the lane was caught trying to sell it online. Call GEICO and see how easy it is to switch and save on renters insurance.
What's better than one unlimited gift from Sprint? Two. Buy one unlimited edition Samsung Galaxy S3, S2, or Victory phone and get the same model free after $50 mail-in rebate. Hurry into your local Sprint store or visit sprint.com for details today.
Coverage and offer not everywhere or on all plans. Subject to two-year agreement credit activation and early termination fees per line. Rebate via reward card. Excludes taxes. Network use rules and restrictions apply. See store for details.
A good webpage is a must-sales tool for today's businesses. Saniam Communications will put together an efficient, thorough webpage that is right for your business. Saniam Communications knows how to bring customers to your door and your phone. Call them at 541-223-7444. Put Saniam Communications to work for you.
Your first choice in local news, sports, and smart talk. This is News Talk 1580 KGAL, Lebanon, Albany, Corvallis.